...our city council order, a meeting to order and ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The role, please.
Seifert.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
MacGyver.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Belke.
Here.
Seven present.
We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. And is any, does anybody in the audience want to address the council at this point? It does not have to be on items that are on the agenda tonight. It could be any items that they want to discuss. Any of the aldermen have anything that they wanted to share? And let's move on to the approval of minutes. Why don't we just take both the minutes together? The October 29th, 2014 goal-setting session minutes and the November 3rd, 2014 minutes. Do I have a motion to approve both of them? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Seifert. We have made some corrections to the, uh, the city council minutes already for the record. The role, please.
Kenny.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
MacGyver.
Aye.
Belke.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Marquess.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The minutes have been approved. The next item is receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications to share? Alderman Kenny?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I have a communication from, uh, Robert Mirana at seventy-eight, there's seven thousand block of Exner. I talked to Mr. Gomback today. Uh, he has a concern with AT&T coming out in front of his home and digging holes in, in the ground. And he said that they weren't, they weren't picked up. I know you, uh, Mr. Gomback stated that somebody was gonna be at his home, um, possibly today.
It's just a follow-up. It is part of the Smart Grid. It is not AT&T. So it's a contractor for ComEd that's doing the work as part of the Smart Grid. Uh, the restoration is supposed to be completed or the hole should be filled by Wednesday or Thursday of this week. And obviously restoration is to be seen as far as, uh, the final grass that goes down due to the weather.
Okay, so, so, so he was correct. There was a hole in the ground that we didn't think should have been there, correct?
Correct. Our typical policy is no holes in the right of way overnight, you know, unless they're barricaded. But nonetheless, we don't allow them for a prolonged amount of time, usually twenty-four to forty-eight hours at a maximum.
Is there a way of monitoring that so that doesn't happen again?
Yes, right. Uh, Dan Slevata returns from vacation tomorrow, so I'm gonna have him, uh, double check to see how long some of these holes have been open for. Um, and make sure that they all get buttoned up here very fast.
Now, who's the contractor working for?
I believe it's intern, intern, intern. That's usually the, who ComEd has been hiring out.
But com, they're doing the work for ComEd?
Yes.
So it'd be worthwhile a call to ComEd to say, get your, get your, uh, your contractor under control here.
Pretty much what we did today at this point, yes.
Okay.
I also have a communication from, um, Lisa Kenny at the sixteen hundred block of Holly Avenue.
Any relationship there, Mr. Kenny?
Slightly, Madam, slightly. Um, yeah, apparently, uh, same contractor has knocked on my wife's door at ten after seven in the morning. And our concern is with the ruse burglaries we've had and we're telling residents not to open the door for, you know, ComEd or the, people using the ruse for utility. Yeah, one comes here to the door. Now, now Lisa hardly ever, she'll never answer the door for anybody. As luck would have it, that morning, we were expecting a floor contractor to her home at seven-thirty. So she thought the guy was just early and just went and opened the door. So, um, I know we've, we've talked to Paul about that and he's contacted, um, um, ComEd. But, yeah, but, you know, I think Chief is gonna talk about this a little later as well.
Okay. Any other, any other communications? Alderman, uh, Marquess?
Well, Madam Mayor, all my, all my emails today, and I received a number of them, all came from residents regarding the topic the Chief is gonna address tonight. And one of them was from Mr. Mallor, who's in the audience, so I'll just wait to, oh, for the Chief to make his presentation tonight.
It will be coming shortly, yes. Any other communicate, Alderman Belke?
I had a couple of questions from some residents on Dale Avenue and they were inquiring about the burn that took place at the Dale Basin. And that was last week. Dan knows about my inquiry. Can you give an update to the viewing audience?
Sure. Dale Basin, uh, what was supposed to have been completed there was what's referred to as an environmental burn. With that burn, Christopher Burke Engineering was out a couple of weeks ago. Uh, they performed the burn and unfortunately the winds were switching directions, uh, from north to south so quickly that once the, the fires were ignited for the burn, um, the northern winds came in and the southern winds basically blew them out. So with that said, they're re, they're trying to reschedule it for this fall yet. And, uh, EPA along with the fire department, along with the residents, will all be notified of the reburn once it's scheduled.
Will all of the, uh, the brush that's in there now be, be taken down with, with the burn? Cause I noticed, I could see the burn on the lower portion of most of the, uh, of the growths.
It's my understanding that majority of the stalks or the leaves of the stalks are burnt, but the stalks do remain.
Okay. I would imagine the invasive, invasive species are the ones that are lower to the ground anyway.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, so that's why I thought they were done with the, with the burn because you could see the scarring on the lower portion of the, of the brush.
Right. And a lot of work that has been completed has, uh, been handwork where they go basically in there with, for lack of better terminology, uh, torches. Uh, especially when they're closer to the home so they can obviously keep an eye on things. And there's some evergreen trees that are very close in proximity to the, uh, wetlands there. So obviously they don't want the evergreens to go up in, uh, smoke.
Any other communications? I received an email from, uh, Josh Maury. He is one of the co-founders of the Miskatonic Brewing Company that we approved last, last city council meeting. And he just wanted to reiterate his thanks to, to, uh, to us. Or the, the great working relationship they had with Mike, Maria, Dan, Brian, all the individuals that helped them through the process. Uh, he said they were incredibly helpful and he looks forward to working with us in the future. So I wanted to present that for the record. You gonna be okay there? Okay. Let's move on to the mayor's report. We have Claire Bon Giovanni with us, the, us this evening.
Good evening. The Darien Chamber of Commerce would like to thank our Darien celebrity dancers that gave outstanding performances at Dancing with the Chamber Stars on Friday night, excuse me. Ann Brennan, President, Darien Women's Club. Mayor Kathleen Weaver, who scored a perfect ten with her lovely waltz. Michael Overman, Michael Overman, LTD. Debbie Kelbick, Partner, Foundations for Learning, excuse me. Chuck Pine, Chuck Southern Comforts Cafe. Levon Ches, Banquet and Sales Event Manager at Carriage Greens Country Club. Paul DeGenti, VP, Government Relations, Republic Bank. Gail Sablick, Owner of Wild Orchid Salon, Salon. The champion mirror ball was presented to Darien resident, Darien Chamber of Commerce Chairman of the Board and owner of Rose Landscape Design, Tom Pappas. Congratulations to all. We would like to thank our grand sponsor, Chuck Southern Comforts Cafe. Our Foxtrot-sponsored Wild Orchid Salon and Suburban Life and our Samba and Cha 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 sponsors. A special thank you to Al Kai Media Group, Al Kohout and staff for his assistance at the event. We're looking forward to our second annual Dancing with the Chamber Stars in two thousand fifteen. A heartfelt thank you to Joe and Kathy, Kathy Marquess for attending the event. Join the Darien Chamber of Commerce this Thursday for a pre-holiday PM networking event at Q Bar and Grill from five PM to seven PM. Register online at darienchamber.com. Stop by Chestnut Court on December fifth for their holiday walk. Remember to bring your shop, local shop, Darien card. The Darien Historical Society will host their annual tree lighting ceremony on Sunday, December seventh at four PM at Ole School. The Darien Chamber of Commerce Holiday Luncheon will be held on December ninth, eleven-thirty AM at Carabba's Italian Grill. The Hinsdale South Mad, Mad Girl Choir will perform from eleven-forty to twelve PM. The Chamber will be having a special drawing for all those attending. Register online at darienchamber.com. On behalf of myself and the board of directors, we'd like to wish all of your families a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Claire, and, uh, congratulations to you on a job well done. You and Ruth and your, and Desiree. Uh, it was a terrific event. It really, it really was a lot of fun. Getting over the, the nerves of getting up and dancing in front of all those people is, is, uh, was, was pretty cool. But it was a great event.
Thank you, and thank you very much for participating.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hopefully, uh, Alderman Marquess will dance next year.
We'll see.
Is that your trophy?
Uh, this, all the participants got, uh, one of these trophies. So, uh, but as she stated, Tom Pappas, they run, you run the event like Dancing with the Stars on TV where, uh, in this case, uh, in front of the judges were, uh, were boxes with our pictures on it. And the, the, uh, all the guests at the event could put money into each person's box to up the number of votes that they got for, uh, for the, the, the main prize. And, uh, Tom Pappas was the winner. So, uh, that was, that was fun. Uh, let's move on to the city clerk's report.
Just one item, Madam Mayor. Uh, city offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday, November the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth for the Thanksgiving holiday.
Let's move to the city admin, city administrator's report. You don't have anything?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I was looking at an email. I'm sorry.
Oh, you're, you're smiling. You must have gotten a humorous one. That, that was quite the call.
It depends on who's reading it. I have no report, thank you.
You'll have to share that one with us. Okay. Uh, let's move on to the Department Head Report. Uh, Chief, I believe you're gonna, uh, give us a report on what's been occurring.
Evening, Madam Mayor and city council and residents. I'm gonna start with the more mundane stuff in the, uh, in our monthly report. So I'm gonna start with investigations. Uh, the report that you guys have before you is, uh, what I'll be taking this information from. Our detectives, uh, on page two of that report, our detectives started with a caseload of fifty-six cases. Five cases were added to that and, uh, five cases were closed by either arrest or, uh, uh, exceptional clearance. And one unfounded case. Fifteen cases were suspended. Suspended cases are cases either where they're, uh, we're awaiting forensic information, uh, fingerprints, DNA, what have you, or cases that we've exhausted all investigative leads. Task Force Officer continues to participate in substantive, uh, seizures and one seizure for eight hundred K. It's in excess, but I don't wanna be specific about the amount. Another seizure for a hundred and fifty and another seizure for about two hundred today. And so the Department of Justice and the United States Marshal Service will determine what portion of that actually comes to Darien. So it'll range in somewhere between three and ten percent normally is what we get. Uh, our new school resource officer was seated, uh, Officer Rich Study was seated to replace Sergeant Jason Norton. Management outreach, Deputy Chief Cooper and Sergeant, uh, Jerry Pickley just returned from the International Association of Police Conference in Orlando. And the importance of that is our, our, our department members get a chance to sit with, uh, police executives, police decision-makers from all over the globe and find out, uh, about the innovative strategies that folks are doing all over, all over the world, not just in, in the United States. Uh, we talked to Jerry at, at the last command staff meeting. He thought it was a very worthwhile event. And so we'll continue that rotation. Uh, there'll be another sergeant. IACP will be in Chicago, so it won't be as expensive to go next year. So, uh, it'll be my turn again to go to Chicago, so. Uh, community engagement, uh, elderly services officer Renner participated in a, uh, presentation, a safety presentation to, uh, a group of female realtors this month, uh, this past month, and it was, uh, well-received. And she passed along some really good information about how to protect yourselves. Uh, I, I don't know if most people realize it, that, uh, in terms of dangerous professions, real estate agents are listed right up with first responders in, in terms of the inherent danger and what they do. And then female real estate agents are particularly vulnerable because they meet people that they have no idea who they are, so.
They just had a realtor down in Arkansas that was, uh, was murdered.
Yes.
Got a call at four o'clock in the afternoon to go show up an abandoned house. She went. Her husband gets it eight o'clock. She's not home yet. Her car's there and she was gone and she never came home.
Extremely, extremely vulnerable, extremely dangerous. So it was a well-received presentation. Uh, we received a request from, uh, Our Lady of Peace for a presentation on internet safety for our young people. Officer Cara Foyle Price, uh, did a really nice presentation over at, uh, Cass Junior High, uh, within Mr. Conkey's STEM class on, uh, forensic crime scene processing. Now, one, one of the other things is, is as part of our ongoing outreach to the community, we're, we're really seeking two things. Number one, our camera registry is, is a real important, uh, tool in our fight against residential burglary and other crimes. And so what we're looking to do is for everyone who has a, a private video surveillance system to register that surveillance system with the police department. You can register it with, uh, our crime analyst at S Sherman at darienil.gov or at six-three-zero-three-five-three-eight-one-four-five. So that, that would be, uh, it's a really good tool. Uh, we've made a couple of, uh, interventions based on private surveillance video and we'd like to keep that moving. So any of the residents out there, any of the elected officials who have, uh, private surveillance, uh, video systems, we'd be happy to register with you, with us. Along those same lines, uh, we retain a, a strong interest in neighborhood watch groups. Because neighborhood watch groups become force multipliers for the police. Certainly in a, and, and there's no city where the police are gonna be everywhere all the time. And so neighborhood watch groups becomes our, become our eyes and ears and basically become force multipliers. So you turn up, the, the size of our force, you, it grows exponentially with the number of neighborhood watch groups that we have. And, and as important as having a neighborhood watch group is even folks who aren't participating in the neighborhood watch group. If you see something, pick up the phone and dial nine-one-one. And if you do it right now, then it's much more easy for us to potentially catch an offender than for, for waiting. And oftentimes, uh, citizens just simply don't think they're sure about what's going on and they don't wanna bother the police. Nine times out of ten, when you think that you should call, make the call because you're right. The hairs on the back of your neck have stood up for some reason. So pick up the phone and make the call. And this is what we, we live for, investigating the potential to catch a bad guy. And so that's, that's one of the things that we, we really live for. Uh, on page four, crime updates and tips. We continue to track a vehicle theft pattern. And, and for any of us who think that, that, uh, crime is only, is limited in geography, we, we're continuing to track the vehicle theft pattern. One of the vehicles that was stolen here in Darien has been used in one homicide, one armed robbery, and four high-speed chases in Chicago. We have, have in fact identified four people of interest who are somehow connected with the two vehicles. Not only are they connected with the two vehicles that were stolen from Darien, they're connected with one another. They all live in the same geographic, uh, location in the, uh, Fourth Police District in Chicago, uh, within a mile and a half of each other. So it's, it's real critical that we, we remain vigilant to people who, who, uh, don't live in the neighborhood and can't have a, a legitimate reason for being there. So, um, we're pursuing that. We're working with, uh, our sister agencies and hopefully we'll be able to make some arrests on that. We're also looking really hard right now at a burglary pattern that began in early September. Uh, there was a hiatus in the pattern, but it picked up again today. We had three burglaries today in Darien. Uh, that's a huge amount of burglaries for a city our size, uh, with a population our size. So we had one on Oak, uh, Oak, uh, Oakdale, one on Dunmore, and one on Chapman Drive. Uh, they were all very similar in nature. We're pursuing leads in them, so I can't discuss it at length. But one of the things, uh, we have to be, again, vigilance is, is what I talk a lot about. And we, when we get this information out, uh, about burglaries, uh, it's not to frighten anybody, but it's to make you aware so that you can take those necessary steps that will prevent you from becoming a victim. In the particular cases, uh, today, there were no residents at home and, uh, entry was attempted through rear doors and it was forced in every occasion. So, uh, one of the residents had an alarm and, and essentially thwarted the burglaries from, uh, entering the home further than they did. So, uh, we're, we're gonna continue pursuing leads and we do have some leads there.
Chief, was the alarm system tied to the police department? Did that cause the police to respond to that particular location?
I don't think any of the, the, the major alarm companies are tied to police departments. They're all tied to, uh, monitoring services within the alarm company. And then ultimately what happens is the alarm company, uh, will either contact the resident and ask if everything is okay and ask for clearance either to call the police or, uh, to, to cancel the alarm.
So, I mean, I'm just curious, what happened in that case? Did, did you, did you eventually hear from somebody?
No, the alarm activated and then the, uh, uh, when the resident came home, they discovered it.
Oh, so it just went on and on?
Yes. One of the other scams that, that continues to, to grow legs of its own is the, uh, IRS scam. People calling up claiming to be representatives of the Internal Revenue. And the scam ranges from the, uh, people who are threatening arrest of, of the, the victim to people who are claiming that their homes are under surveillance and, uh, demanding payment for, uh, alleged tax bills. And, uh, we, we continue to get these callers and, and the best way to defeat this call is, is to hang up and dial nine-one-one. The caller IDs, they're, they're, they're using some very sophisticated, uh, electronic devices that would actually show, uh, a number with a, a Washington DC area code of two-oh-two. And so it, you may get the impression that you're actually being called from Washington, but you're not. Uh, the Internal Revenue Service will never call you and make a demand like that. Uh, it's really a lot worse than that if the Internal Revenue Service calls you. So, uh, please don't, don't buy into, to this scam, not in the least. Somebody from IRS calls you, they have all the information they need, they need, and they will have sent you a letter in advance. So if someone calls claiming to be from the IRS, please hang up and call nine-one-one. Darien police officers responded to a, a man with a gun, man with a weapon call at Seventy-Fifth and Plainfield and arrested, uh, an individual with a fully loaded handgun stuck into his waistband. Uh, he was arrested. Uh, he didn't have a concealed carry card or any other reason to lawfully have it. And he was arrested and it turned out he was a convicted felon. He was charged accordingly. Uh, last month, as part of our, um, the spike in burglies to, in order to be more responsive to that, we initiated a new crime strategy of, uh, attacking the known criminals through criminal warrants. So we get arrest warrants, uh, for criminal offenses from three, basically locations. We either get them from DuPage County, Illinois Department of Correction or Cook County. And so what we've done is we put together warrant packages and we've tasked our patrol officers with going out, making sure we arrest these folks. So the, the reason why that's an important strategy is because a person with an arrest warrant has already proven a proclivity or an inclination towards committing a crime. And so the best way to stop a crime is to put bad guys in jail. And so we've been, uh, we did our first warrant mission. We had five active warrants. Two of the people had, had left the jurisdiction, no longer residing in Darien. Two of the people we actually arrested and one we're still working on, so. Last week, uh, one of the aldermen, I think it was Alderman Seifert posed a question about, uh, correlation between arrests and incidents reported. And I, I thought it was such a good question that it bore some, it required some additional explanation. And so there is a correlation that we make as man, police managers to the, uh, arrest and, and incidents. But in order for that, uh, correlation to be meaningful and effective, we have to be looking at arrests directed, directly related to specific offenses. So for example, if I have six theft offenses and I arrest people for disorderly conduct, there is no correlation between that. If I have six theft offenses and I'm arresting six theft offenders, then there is a correlation between that because I've, number one, I've either solved crimes or prevented crimes or both. And so that's why the correlation is so, so important. And so the, the real measure for this is in our clearance rate. So we look at a clearance rate based on each individual crime, not just an overall correlation between arrest and incidents. So the, uh, clearance rate is essentially the number of crimes that occurred in a specific, uh, category divided by the number of arrests in that category, arrests where charges are levied in that category. So if I'm looking at a burglary clearance rate, I need to know how many burglaries we had and how many burglars we've arrested. And so that's why, uh, why a correlation between arrest and incidents is important. And that's the way we make that, that correlation. If you go to, uh, page five of the, uh, report, you'll see a six-year crime trend. I won't go into length, uh, into any depth on that. You can see for yourself what it shows as a total. What I did is I compared the, the three years prior to my arrival to the three years since. Uh, it's a six-year period. And what it shows is that there were six hundred and forty incidents in the, the three years from two thousand, uh, nine to two thousand and eleven and five hundred and sixty-six incidents. We tracked, I think it's eleven categories that we tracked. So it shows an eleven-point-five percent decline in, uh, overall crime in those areas tracked. Which is good, but it's not good enough. If you have one, it's one too many. Uh, the biggest, the, the most significant changes were in motor vehicle theft and, uh, burglary to motor vehicle. Residential, residential, uh, burglary was down thirty-nine-point-two percent. And, I'm sorry, burglary to motor vehicles down thirty-nine-two-point-two percent. Motor vehicle was forty-six percent. We're headed in the right direction, but we have a long way to go yet. One of the areas for concern with the reallocation of resources and, and the way we're doing business now was, has there been a, a significant change in the, uh, response time to our calls? And on the, on the next page, page six, you can see there has not. There's a one-tenth of a, a minute change since, from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and fourteen. And the data is not available prior to that because two thousand and eleven is when we went to DuCom. So the, uh, call data and, and, and response time data is not available prior to that. The call data is, is gleaned from, uh, tracking the time from, the, the time a call is actually dispatched to the time the officer arrives on the scene. Last point is crime comparisons. When we look at our crime comparisons, uh, the large, we see on, from page seven, see the largest changer in thefts, domestic violence, and burglary to the motor vehicle incidents. Some of the changes due to increase in incidents and some is due to a change in the way we classify doc, uh, incidents. Thefts largely show an increase, uh, which is the biggest portion of the increase in both yearly and, uh, year-to-date is the, is because of Walmart and an increased security presence at Walmart. So they're apprehending more shoplifting offenders. So that, that's responsible for that increase. The battery increase, uh, increase in batteries is likely due to reclassification, how we classify, uh, incidents from Hinsdale South. Prior to this year, uh, if there was a fight between, uh, young people there, it was classified as a disorderly conduct. Now it's classified as a battery. Anytime somebody strikes another person or places them in fear of receiving a, a battery, it's a battery. And so we were misclassifying it to, to label it disorderly conduct. So we're labeling it correctly now, so that, that's responsible for some of that increase. Uh, the BMW, we are in fact experiencing a, a small spike, spike in burglaries to the motor vehicles. And so, uh, we're working on that. And domestics have actually spiked and we're taking a look at how we can, how can we, how we can be more effective in that. That will conclude, uh, most of my, uh, report. What I'm really interested in is, is conveying to the residents how essential it is for us to open up lines of communication. Right now, we're, we use Direct Connect, we use the monthly newsletter, we use Nixle. And we, we, we're really looking for, for ways to communicate more effectively and get our information out. Uh, we, we've opened up Nixle and we only have about a hundred folks signed up on Nixle.
Can you explain what that is?
It's a, it's, um, one of the, so, it's like a social media. And what we're able to do is send out, uh, um, information directly to residents on Nixle. N-I-X-L-E. Um, we'll have, uh,
Which is a text alert.
It's like a text alert. That's exactly what it is.
I used to get Nixle alerts from Darien, but I, maybe two or three years ago, and I no longer get them. So do I need to sign up again?
We'll, we'll check and see if you, if you're still signed up. Greg, you can check, right? Okay. Okay. Uh, we'll, we'll get something out to the council.
Chief, do you wanna tell people how to sign up for Nixle?
Uh, you know, I really, uh, normally what we do is, uh, Stacy handles that, Greg, and Stacy handle that.
So call, is there a number to call?
Yeah, Stacy.
Also, Chief, just as a reminder, if you go to the, the city's website, right in the bottom right of the page, there's information about Nixle and it tells you everything, um, right there, how to sign up.
I mean, I think historically, Nixle was more for like weather than it was for anything else.
Well, I've gotten a lot of dog, lost dog, uh,
Yeah, you get a lot of lost dogs and cats and, uh, traffic accidents.
Every town uses a little different. One of the things we talked about is, should that be for things that are really important? Or should we use that for all the information? But we're starting to push that again with, with, um, up, you know, up to a hundred people. But we'll start using that as we do now with Twitter and all those other, um,
I mean, I think, and, you know, one of the issues is that, I think a lot of the residents that need the information, they're not gonna be on Nixle, they're not gonna be on Twitter, they're not gonna be on Facebook. I don't think there's an answer, but, you know, a lot of the elderly population, they're just not going to get their information by these means, period. So that's the difficulty in reaching those residents.
And we're open for suggestions, cause certainly that, that we, we, we have not been able to reach nearly as many people as we'd like, as we'd like to.
Well, the school districts use something like, ours uses something called School Reach, which I'm sure they can do with other government entities. And what that is, is, you know, you can sign up however many phone numbers you want, and I'm sure there's something, you know, similar. But you can, you know, so basically for my kid's school, it'll call my house, it'll call my cell phone, it calls my husband's cell phone, it calls my mom. It's anyone you want to have information, like if it's a school closing or some, something happened at the school or if there's just information they wanna share about something coming up.
Is it a voice text?
Yeah, it's just voice, yeah. It's, you'll get a call and you pick it up and it's a recording saying, you know, this is whoever, the principal. You know, and we have an announcement and this is what the announcement is. But it comes, any, you know, if it's something that happens during the school day that parents need to know right away. You know, they've had a couple of bomb threats at my kid's school over the last few years and so I'll, I'll immediately at my kid's school over the last few years, and so I'll immediately, before I hear it on the news, they'll call me. So, you know, it kind of gives you information of what's going on.
I think you suggested you were going to reach out to Principal Palmer-
Yes.
Because she suggested that they have a system.
Senator Cass uses it as well.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
That may be a good option, because I know, the only person I know that has or uses their home phone is my mother, so.
But it could be cell phones, too. You can list, you can give as many numbers as you want.
Because I know from the school, I get it on my home phone, on my cellphone, and I hear my wife's phone.
Chief, about a year, year and a half ago, we got a call like that at home. There, that White home on Old Field Road there by Eighty-Sixth Street. There was an elderly gentleman, I think he had Alzheimer's, and he was always disappearing and walking away. We got a phone call, and the phone call said, this man gave a description. I don't know if it was DuPage County Sheriff's Police, but it was almost like that, where everybody, and all my neighbors said they got that phone call to look beyond the alert for this gentleman. That wasn't us, I think that was someone else who gave that.
We'll take a look and see what else.
But I mean, with these, with what happened today, there seems to be, what was expressed by several people in emails is, they don't feel like they're getting information. But at the same time, I think we're putting a lot of information out there. I just don't know whether or not people are accessing that or understand where to go to find that.
Well, part of the problem with this is the information that they were requesting today, they wouldn't have gotten until this, even under the most ideal circumstances. That wouldn't have been available till this evening, because we were still in the process of active investigations, gathering evidence, and processing all three of those scenes, up until just shortly before we came in here, met with the sergeant who was responsible for the three investigations just before coming in here. So we couldn't have gotten it out until this evening, even under the most ideal situation.
You know, Mr. Mallers is in the audience tonight, and one of the things he mentioned that people had asked him was the idea of having a neighborhood watch. And that might be something we can talk about, but I think a lot of people don't understand what that, you know, what that includes, because somebody has to be out there walking the neighborhood. In a lot of these homes, people, everybody's gone during the day going to work. The other thing is, you expressed some desire to meet with some of these homeowners associations. I know Lou could get the Pinehurst people, and Mr. Shower and I talked about possibly getting the Carriage Greens and the Smart Oaks and the Smart Oaks Glen Homeowners Association people, and maybe having you join us to-
Absolutely.
Communicate. That's a possibility?
No, that's an absolute. If you guys get it, I'm more than happy to be there.
Yeah, so we talked to Mr. Mallers tonight about that.
We'll work to facilitate that.
Okay, okay.
Joe, also, Kate Sullivan had emailed some of the aldermen, but not all of the aldermen.
That was Mary Sullivan.
I am sorry, yeah, from Mary Sullivan. And I responded to her tonight, and she's going to be trying to set up some meetings in different neighborhoods, exactly what you're talking about. But again, from a resident's perspective, she'll know who to reach out to, how to set that up, and we'll obviously be available anytime. And that's, one of the most important things we can do is get out there and let the residents try to form these groups and stay in touch with the police department.
Marco Stace also wants to be involved as well.
Marco. Going back to the senior citizens, I know that Officer Runner and-
Liska.
And Officer Liska do a lot of presentations to senior citizen groups. How can we drill down to get, I know that they had a program that they were soliciting and trying to get a card catalog of every senior citizen in town in order to keep in touch with them. How is that going, and how can we drill down to even more contacts with seniors?
I think we have about 300 names up to this point, and I think here again, it's the same issue. How do we reach them? Quite a few of the seniors do in fact have cell phones, and so that's, again, one possibility. But we're continuing to grow that list. And then we're about to add another officer to that component. Officer Camacho has expressed an interest to participate in that, so we're going to add her.
Yeah, she's a real go-getter, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Chief, another thing that I've suggested to the kids, like if they see something, I mean, everyone has cameras on their phones, besides, of course, calling nine one one right away if you see something suspicious. But certainly, you know, wouldn't it be helpful for the police if someone sees something after they call to take a picture of the vehicle or whatever?
It is, but I don't want anybody to unduly jeopardize themselves, because if-
I mean, even if you can do it from your window or something.
If you can do it from your window, if it's something that can safely be done, but you never know what reaction somebody's going to have to a civilian or a kid standing out there trying to snap their picture. So if it can be done surreptitiously, I'm all for it. But I don't want anybody to unduly endanger themselves to do so.
Alderman Belkey?
Yeah, back to the community engagement. I'm looking at the school visits for the month, and there was 37 visits. Now, depending, like with your explanation of community event engagements, it looks like Cass, you know, had a presentation. But outside of that, are these other ones just where the policemen are walking the halls to show presence?
Yes, yes. We essentially rely on the schools to let us know what they want us to present on. So we had the presentation on internet safety request for OLAP. So hopefully, as the school principals and school administrators see how effective these presentations are, that they'll do more, they'll engage us more. But we're there on a daily basis at most of the schools anyway. But we'd like to do more presentations.
So it's up to them to kind of narrow down what focus they want?
What they want to focus on. So much of the things that we once did have been ingrained into either their health, their sciences, their English, or their history curriculum now. And so it's actually a part of their academic curriculum, so.
Okay, and one more thing would be a follow-up to the high school, it's not a parking thing, but the high school event, that was the big football where we had somebody visiting in a way school, come visit.
DeKalb.
Yeah, and we, you reached out to the principal at Hinsdale South. I was aware, you know, that this event was going on. And did we get any feedback, how that went, or did they do anything different?
It went well. They didn't, they did not use the shuttles, as news I'm led to believe. There were no shuttles. They did announce to the, both the, they reached out to the visiting team, the team coach, the team principal, to alert them to the limitations on parking nearby, and encourage the parking, the utilization of their school parking lots. But we, it went off without incident, so.
And did any of the officers report how the streets looked?
The officers said everything was fine.
Okay, good.
Anything else for the chief? Thank you very much. Do we have any other department head reports?
No, Madam Mayor.
Can we get an update on the Seventy-Fifth?
The only update that really is left is the resurfacing. There's the final layer of surface left to be put on Seventy-Fifth Street. The problem has been is, the specification that's designed for the mix needs to be 50 degrees and rising. There's also an additive that could be added to this mix, and I believe it's at 40, has to be 40 degrees and rising. Again, I'm not sure if that's been approved yet, but the county is still very hopeful that they're going to have the surface completed by Thanksgiving. As far as the landscaping goes, landscaping will consist of sod. And again, the way it's going, it doesn't look very good. The ground is starting to get real, obviously, pretty cold and frozen, and the same thing for concrete.
And I didn't look at that carefully, but the reports we got on Friday had some discussion about December finishing up, not Thanksgiving.
It's still Thanksgiving. I just received an email today just to confirm that. So they're still looking for Thanksgiving. The rest of the remainder of the work is probably going to be December with the streetlight signals, for example, or some of the miscellaneous work, as I refer to it as. But the striping, the sod, and the resurfacing is kind of the controlling items that need to be completed with weather that's decent. Once the, once temperatures are below freezing, a lot of the stuff I just mentioned, you can't do it.
So that's why we probably didn't see much activity this weekend, whereas last weekend it was like just crazy out there.
Correct, correct. And everything's, it's sort of in limbo right now. Now, do we pull the trigger on this or that? And every day, it just becomes a weather-pending factor at this time.
Thank you.
Do we have a lot of, how's the amounts of dirt doing? Have those been eliminated, or do we still have some to move?
Ones in front of Colonial Manor have been eliminated. There's still a portion in front of Norman Courts. I know they've been working on that. Again, today was one of those days where nothing was really moving. But that's their goal also, and that could be one of the items by December. Again, if the ground is frozen, no one's going to be moving anything, unfortunately.
Dan, last week, we had, you know, a spike in calls when they were, you know, at the height of actually laying asphalt. And I know that becomes more problematic. If they're planning, they might have the left lane closed. But maybe you just take a minute and explain how challenging it is right at that time where they're laying the asphalt. Because that, it's really hard for people to understand why they're driving, and all of a sudden they got to merge in the left lane. I know that's not our project, but you certainly understand that better than most of us.
Right, from what I understand, I was on vacation, fortunately or unfortunately. But in respect to the paving operation, the paving operation is a moving operation, and it's very fluid. Usually what will happen is one lane, let's call it a Plainfield Road, for example, one westbound lane will begin to be surfaced. Next thing you know, that'll take about 45 minutes to an hour. And all of a sudden, the traffic pattern is switched within those hour, two hours. And they use cones to direct traffic. So it does become somewhat chaotic. But nonetheless, it's a moving train, and it's very difficult to set up traffic control and staging. Otherwise, it would take the remainder of a day for all of the paving to be done and all the traffic operations. So it's really one of those items that's the last item, and it does become hectic, but they do have flaggers out there.
We did have one upset resident, Mr. Merrick. Do we know, do we know if Central Blacktop reached out to him regarding his issue?
I know that they had the claim. The form needs to be filled out by Mr. Merrick. I'm unsure if he has completed it. But I know Central Blacktop has been responding back to the claimants.
Very good. I just wanted to make sure that they were being responsive to the Darien resident. Alderman Belkey?
Yes, did you get any complaints or feedback from any vehicles that are traveling eastbound on Seventy-Fifth Street and trying to make a right-hand turn onto Plainfield there? That's where they, it used to have its own little-
Correct.
-half circle.
I have not received any calls, but that was something that was discussed in the pre-planning stages, that that will not be put back in.
Correct, but the way it is now, it allows for a right-hand turn, and I don't see how any vehicle can make that radius.
It's a hard, it's a hard right, definitely.
Very hard.
Yes.
I couldn't even do it, and I have a small car.
And the goal of it during the discussions was, whatever businesses were located on Seventy-Fifth Street had the opportunity to go back onto Plainfield Road. You know, with that said, there was no justification for the county to put in that individual right-hand turn only. It was convenient, yes, but that's something the county had ultimately decided.
I just don't know if eventually they might have to put a sign that says no right turn, if it's a hazard and you can't make it.
I've tried it, you can make it, but it's a very, very hard right. I'm sure if you have a bigger vehicle, maybe a little more difficult.
And the other thing is, you need cooperation from the vehicles that are heading down Plainfield, heading east, so that they don't, you know, they're far enough back so you can make that turn. So maybe that was my problem, where somebody was, you know, stopped too far up.
And some of the striping that's out there right now is obviously temporary, so once the official striping comes into place. You know, and one more point in respect to lanes. I know we've had several calls on the Speedway residents or patrons trying to get into the Speedway gas station. If you're moving for, on northbound on Cass Avenue, you cannot make a left anymore into the Speedway gas station. What the county has done is they've built a median in the center there. But what's going to happen is, a U-turn will be allowed at Seventy-Fifth Street and Cass for northbound traffic specifically for that reason, to allow patrons of Speedway to enter. Also, one of the long-term plans is working with John Manos is to try to develop a cross-access agreement between Brookhaven and Speedway.
It might have to go through Popeye's property, yeah. I think that's the most direct route. Okay, anything else for staff? Then let's move on to, let's see, the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval, warrant number 141513, the amount of $522,795.12 from the listed funds, payroll for the period ended November 13th, and the amount of $242,839.59, for a total to be approved of $765,634.71.
Do I have a motion to approve Alderman Seifert, seconded by Alderman Shower? Discussion? The roll, please.
Seifert?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The warrant has been approved. Let's move to standing committee reports. Do any of the chairman have reports? Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next admin finance meeting will be held on Monday, December 1st, 2014, at 6:00 PM in our upstairs meeting room, pending agenda items.
Alderman Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder, Municipal Services will be meeting next Monday night, November 24th. Here's 6:30 in the council chambers.
Alderman MacIver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next police committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 15th, 2014. That date may change, but we'll get an update at the next council meeting if that does change. 6:00 PM in the police training room across the parking lot.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I know this isn't my committee's report, but residents who live in the area surrounding Walmart over there might be interested in attending the planning and zoning meeting this Wednesday night, where they'll be discussing the Phil Gardner property. And I know that I had a number of residents who called, who I saw, who were concerned about that. And I told them, well, you need to go to that meeting on Wednesday night. But for anybody who didn't hear that, it's this Wednesday, I don't know what time that is. Was it 6:30?
7:30.
7:30? Is that going to be, where is that at, Dan?
City Hall, right down here.
Right down here, okay.
Treasurer Quin?
And the same night, Wednesday night at 7:00 PM, there will be the police pension fund. We'll be having our meeting across the street at the police training room.
Thank you. Let's move on to questions, comments, agenda-related. Do any of the aldermen have questions on?
I'm sorry, Mayor. Dan, did you say seven or 7:30? I'm sorry.
Blank commission?
Yes.
7:30.
It's 7:30 traditionally, isn't it?
Mr. Mallers?
Seven, yeah.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Well, there's a preferred committee, yeah.
Excuse me, it is seven o'clock.
Seven, okay, thanks.
Okay, no questions from the aldermen? Has anyone in the audience wanted to address the city council on the items that are on the agenda this evening?
Lou Mallers, 1411 Pine Cove Court, Darien, Illinois. I just want to say two things. I had talked to Alderman Marques and also Sergeant Pickley about what happened today after I had gotten home from work and received a number of phone calls. And I'm just really pleased at how quickly we're taking some action. And I think the important thing is, for you to be successful in what you do, you need to have our input. And anybody that doesn't input, you know, it's kind of a shame, but I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
All righty, let's move on to old business in there. Yes, Alderman Belkey?
I do want to talk a little bit about what's on the consent agenda with the compliance for public comment, because there was some, not, I don't want to say lengthy, but there was some discussion on, you know, allowing the three minutes per person to talk as we do already in the beginning of the agenda. But, you know, my feeling was, I didn't want to turn people off to not be able to say what they want either. I didn't want to give the impression that the city doesn't want to hear what they have to say. So I just want to stress that within these rules, there is the option for the council and the mayor to bypass that and announce at the meetings that we will allow for more, you know, more minutes to talk for certain issues. Now, when it's a heated issue, like maybe the gun one, that's where we came up and we said, you know, maybe the three minutes does make sense, so we're not here all night. But more than not, those meetings don't happen. So I just don't want to give the impression that the council doesn't want to hear what you have to say. And we're going to, you know, cut you off at three, and that's it, sorry.
And in addition to that, you know, the long meetings, Alderman Belkey mentioned being here all night. It was really, part of the discussion, too, was, in a long meeting, you want everybody to have a chance to talk. And without that rule, you literally could have somebody going on for a half hour, and then other members in the audience would not have a fair time to speak. So again, I think that was part of also the reasoning for that three minutes, where the committee felt comfortable.
You know, we've been, we've been really good about letting residents and people speak to us. I think a lot of these rules came up from municipalities and governmental agencies that did not allow- I think a lot of these rules came up from municipalities and governmental agencies that did not allow questions or cut off, cut off any kind of discussion at meetings. So I think we're pretty good about that. The one rule I was surprised at, and I know that we typically, the clerk typically asks, and we typically ask for the address of the person that's speaking to us. And now that's, that's part of the rules, where we don't have to ask, we don't have to ask that question. So I thought that was probably the only thing that we don't do, we do differently. But otherwise, we are pretty good about allowing residents to speak to us.
Mayor, I think you said that we don't have to, but you, more assertively, we wouldn't ask that.
We don't have to, we don't...
Not that we don't have to, we're really not permitted.
We're not, we can't ask that anymore, yeah. We can't ask that anymore. We typically have. We, that was something we typically did, was ask the resident's name and address, but now that's part of the rules that we don't.
If there are issues that the council's interested to find out if you're a Darien resident, you're certainly permitted to just ask if you're a Darien resident. We used to have to let non-residents speak, but that gives the council an indication of at least the resident's perspective versus maybe residents that aren't, that are maybe unincorporated or not in the community.
Yeah, we had some folks take advantage of us during that discussion, I remember. They were, they said they were Darien residents, but they were really unincorporated residents, so that was unfortunate. Any other items on the consent agenda for discussion? All right, then let's move to the consent agenda. There's, the following items are on the consent agenda. A motion to grant a waiver of the raffle license bond requirements for the Darien Women's Club raffle. Item B is a motion to grant a waiver to the Darien Historical Society for their raffle license bond. Item C is a consideration of a motion to approve the recommendation to approve rules for compliance with public comment requirements of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. That's what Alderman Belkey was referring to. Item D is a motion to approve the payment of the city's net pension obligation to IMRF in the amount of fifty-four thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars. And the last item is a motion to approve extending the refuse contract with advanced disposal for an additional two-year period, which was allowed in the contract. Do I have a motion to approve those items? Alderman MacIver, seconded by Alderman Belzak? No discussion. The roll, please.
MacIver?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All items have been approved. The next item is new business, and we do not have any new business this evening. So let's move right to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Do any of the aldermen have any announcements they'd like to make? Alderman Kenny?
Madam Mary, discusses the last council meeting. You and I will be at Brookhaven Shopping Center on December's sixth and twentieth with Santa Claus, and on December thirteenth at Brookhaven Shopping Center, the Eisenhower Junior High Choir will be doing Christmas carols throughout the center.
Any other announcements from the alderman? I'd like to open it up to the floor. Does anyone in the audience want to address the city council on any items? Come on up to the microphone.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Robert Mayerana. I live at seventy-eighteen Exner Road.
Thank you for volunteering that.
I figured I would, anyway. I'm a twenty-two, twenty-three-year resident of Darien. And I'd like to know, why is there such a delay with the AT&amp;T utility work on Exner Road? They have the sidewalk blocked off close to Seventy-first Street. And between my driveway and my neighbor to the north at Seventy-fourteen, they pretty much consumed most of the parkway by digging a very large hole there. It's very deep. And at this point, I didn't quite understand why they had to do such a large excavation. But the issue that I have is, is that this is, it appears that there's not a lot of progress on this, and it's been about a month. Over the weekend, I called Alderman Kenny to advise him that there was plywood that was protruding into the street beyond the curb. And the fact of the matter is, is that they've put up an orange barrier fence that is about forty inches off the ground, and it makes it kind of difficult to back out of the driveway. So my curiosity, and I've called Mr. Gombek as well, you know, how long is this gonna take these fellows to complete this project? Doesn't seem like it's a real big project throughout the Farmingdale subdivision where I'm at.
Funny, we were just talking about that.
It's not like Commonwealth Edison. They started today, and they're in the back, and it's gonna be another catastrophe, as far as I'm concerned, later on in the springtime with sinkholes and some other stuff. But right now, it appears to be mostly generated on Park District property. But those phone calls will come in the spring, because I know what's gonna happen there. There's gonna be a lot of sinkholes. But once again, it's my concern here, is that there's very slow progress.
Alderman Kenny did bring up the issue, and we did discuss it earlier.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we did, yes. And I thought maybe you saw it on television, then screwed it over here, but no. So let's have Dan respond to that. Dan was on vacation, but I know Dan Silvato was active with AT&amp;T.
Right, and it's not AT&amp;T. It is Commonwealth Edison. It's our subcontractor. It's our understanding. It's part of the Smart Grid system. First of all, our superintendent is returning back from vacation tomorrow as well. There was some electronic permitting that was completed, so we did follow up with the company today. They're supposed to be completing the, I should say, backfilling the open holes by Wednesday or Thursday, and our superintendent's gonna go back, yes. And our superintendent's gonna go back over their protocols in respect to having open holes. So we do not allow them, or we don't allow them for any period longer than twenty-four hours. So we're gonna make sure those protocols are all resolved tomorrow, and by Thursday, everything should be backfilled. When I say backfilled, I don't mean that the restoration will be completed, obviously, due to the weather at this time.
Well, it's been about a month, and so that's, you know, now is the concern because of the change in the weather, as you mentioned earlier about the project on Seventy-Fifth Street. And then another factor for me is I've maintained this for twenty-three, going on twenty-four years. I fertilized it. I have not just mowed it, but I fertilized it. I've watered it and paid my own money to water that, the whole parkway, not just, you know, any small portion of it. So my other concern is, is that with sod, that these people came in and they tore up, and what they're replacing it with is a, is a grass-and-hay mixture mat, which, you know, I'm not so sure at this time of year, you know, what the survivability would be with that. You know, if it'll survive and make it through springtime and come back as grass as it was there in the first place. So that's another issue that I have.
Correct. More than likely, it's dormant seed. Whether or not it takes, that's something to be seen in the springtime. We do have the permit numbers and the responsible parties, but we will take a look at it. In a lot of cases, we do recommend and mandate that they do put sod back in play. So in your address, again, with seventy-eighteen Exner?
Well, it's seventy-eighteen, and it's between the two parkways. And the hole that these fellows dug, it was a subcontractor, and my understanding is that's all from AT&amp;T. That's not ComEd. ComEd, right now, has started the project in the back. Throughout, you know, from what I've been told, most of the subdivision is where they're at. But this was all AT&amp;T, and it's only a small portion. From what I was told, it was about fifteen hundred feet for their entire run, but it's been a month. And it's a deep hole, and they had access into that hole. There's actually a live wire from ComEd that comes across Exner Road that's in that pit right now.
Mr. Mayerana?
Predicated my call to Mr. Kennedy on Saturday.
Mr. Mayerana, you've spoke to the contractors out there, and they've told you they were from AT&amp;T. Is that correct?
No, those contractors are subcontractors for AT&amp;T, and then, as I indicated to you on Saturday, that they actually had mentioned that, well, sometimes this takes a while to get completed. And so when I did question these gentlemen, I said, really? How long does that take? They had no answer for me on that. And this was back in October. I was off the first, the very first week of October, and they began their project at the end of that week.
Dan, will you?
So there's your time.
Yeah, so we'll have to, we'll have to check out whether it's ComEd or AT&amp;T.
Yeah, will you please verify that?
I believe it's AT&amp;T. I believe it's AT&amp;T, and it's gonna be a nuisance now, but, you know, as I said, for all the years I've lived here, there are a lot of underground cables in the front and in the back. But now, what they've done is they've put in a post between the two driveways, which is fine. It's an eyesore. It's not directly in front of the house, thank God for that. It would make, you know, the value of your home actually, I would think, diminish itself if it was directly in front of the house, but it's off to the side. And, you know, for twenty-three years, it was, it seemed that, you know, their wiring was fine. Now, all of a sudden, they have to put in a service post between these two driveways. Okay, that's fine. I mean, I'll mow around it, you know, but it's just, you know, another little thing to mention.
Okay, so Dan, you've got his address, so we'll have staff keep in touch with you and let you know what's going on.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's a safety issue.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, it's a safety issue.
Exactly, yes.
So, and there's a lot of people that walk the neighborhood. They're either, you know, just exercise walking, or they're walking their dogs. And what they have now, last week, they completely blocked off the sidewalk as you approach Seventy-first Street. So it's really turned into a little bit of a nuisance now, so.
Okay, thanks for coming in. Alderman MacIver?
I have a question for Dan. Do they have to get permission to put a pedestal in the parkway? I mean, wouldn't we be opposed to that, putting pedestals in the park? That's really a very...
Part of franchise agreements, they do have the right to put in pedestals or part of infrastructure. I mean, they place it, I'll call it in strategic locations where they don't place it in front of the door. Usually, they'll place it between two common properties.
AT&amp;T has a franchise agreement with us?
All our utilities do.
Yeah, it's a little different, Dan, recently with the telecommunications, because with the cable and deregulation, there's a language in state statute that allowed, about three years ago, this was a big deal in a lot of municipalities, because they were putting these boxes up all over, and the state law allows them to do that in public right-of-way. Even though it's the city's right-of-way, it's still a public right-of-way, and they have access to do that. We can follow up and see if there's, you know, maybe we should, we can get something to the council that explains that. But that was the change a few years ago that a lot of communities did not like.
Yeah, those U-verse boxes that they've been putting up, those are very unsightly.
Dan, in terms of the restoration, I know when we have main breaks and we'll fill with stone, there is a time period, though, that you'll let those settle out before you put any kind of seed or anything. So I was a little confused if they're, you know, already trying to restore areas. That's what, the one thing I wasn't clear on. So certainly, just so the residents are aware, if they're gonna fill those holes, they're gonna fill them this year, but they're certainly not gonna be topsoiled.
Right, depending on the depth of the excavation, you know, in our cases, the water mains are usually about five, averaging about five foot deep. And our holes are very big in comparison to some of these smaller trenches where the pos, you do have the opportunity in some cases
You do, okay.
to be able to restore them fully. But again, we'll take a look at everything tomorrow and make sure what's supposed to be there or what's not there.
Any water main breaks with the severe change in temperature?
Not yet, not come wood.
We had so many last year, we better, hopefully, repair everything that needs to be repaired. Alderman Belkey?
One more thing, switching subjects. I wanted to invite everybody to the annual Bonfield Express 5K Thanksgiving morning run-walk. And the early registration is through November twenty-first. As you remember, this is in honor of Jim Bonfield, who was a DGS teacher, coach, et cetera. And this is to raise money for scholarships for local high schools, including our own District Eighty-Six.
Thank you. Did you sign up to run already? I'm off my, I haven't been running regularly, so I don't know if I'm gonna do it. I might have to be the babysitter while the rest of my family goes runs in the event. Anybody else running on that? You're a runner.
No, my knees don't like me running.
Yeah, I was gonna try to do it. Okay, if there's nothing else to discuss, do I have a motion to adjourn? Alderman MacIver, seconded by Alderman Belkey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Turning the mics off.
Is that what you were trying to do? Oh, my God.